Good evening. I hereby call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, May 28, 2025. And could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Clarkson?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Kirk?
Here.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Here. We have a quorum. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of April 23, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
No.
No.
Hearing none. And could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Clarkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Kirk?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Aye.
Motion's approved. There is no one present for public participation, and so we can move on to the liaison report. Anne?
Thank you. The village board approved the lot combination at 28 to 30 East Burlington Street, which is the site of the planned unit development. The village is reviewing engineering plans for that project, but not building plans yet. So that is moving forward.
Thank you very much. That brings us to new business, which is discussion of minor text amendments and process text amendments. Anne, could you please take us through those?
Thank you very much. So this is based on the discussion that we had in March. We had listed and then prioritized all of our anticipated text amendments that were upcoming. So the first set of text amendments were what I termed minor text amendments and process amendments. So in terms of the minor text amendments, I'll review what was provided in the staff report and refer back to the document as needed. Both were provided, so the memo summarizes the purpose of the text amendments, and then the actual proposed text amendments were also included in the packet. So starting with number one is how to address -- or excuse me, address how to measure the heights of houses that are elevated using fill. So the zoning ordinance provides standards for how to measure buildings, but it doesn't state that any fill added under a building should be included in the measurement of the building's height, which seems a good addition to be specific. So we have the measurement standards here. So staff recommends adding the following sentence to the definition: "The measurement of building height shall include the height of fill under the building." So fairly straightforward. We also recommended adding a sentence for clarification in the existing definition. So this is just to clarify how you would measure the maximum allowable height on an existing site with no building. So just to clarify, we would add the language that's underlined in red to the existing sentence above it, just to clarify that that's the purpose of that measurement. Very minor change, but just the clearer we can make the language, I think, the more usable it will be.
Could I, in your professional opinion?
Sure.
The definition as it is written, or not the definition -- right, the definition for building height, is that a well-written definition? Or would it be better to rewrite it totally anew?
I'm open to suggestion. Let me find it in our packet so that we can take a look at it together.
It was on a minor text amendment, I know. Yeah, right there.
Yeah, let me pull it up here. I found that as a practitioner fairly easy to use.
Okay.
And as someone reading the code. I am open to any suggestions that you had that would either clarify it, or if you think there's something lacking, I'm happy to hear that too.
Well, one question. I've never understood what would be a situation where you would have a height measurement at the center point of the front door, or from a point three feet above existing grade at the center point of the front door. When would that ever occur?
Oh, sure. So the two -- and I think I included this in the memo, but basically, how you would measure the height of the building is you've got one of two options. You take a look at -- you start measuring at the foundation.
Right.
Right? And you go up. If the foundation, for some reason, is higher than three feet, then you pick three feet. So you pick the height of the top of the foundation or three feet, whichever is lower. So if you had a foundation that was one foot above the ground, you'd start measuring the top of the foundation, measure up.
Okay.
There are some houses with a very elevated foundation, and the case where you'd have a four-foot or five-foot, I don't know where a five-foot tall foundation would be, but if you had something that was above three feet, you would, instead of selecting the top of that foundation, you'd select three feet and then measure up.
Okay. So at three -- at a point three feet above existing grade?
At the center point of the front door. I mean, just picking the spot in the building where you would measure, or--
Whichever is lower.
Yep, whichever is lower. Yeah.
So does that result in some houses being two feet taller than other houses, having an additional two-foot height?
I think if you had a lower foundation, like if you had a one-foot foundation, then you would start measuring from the height, and your ultimate height would be a little bit lower. It would probably only be two feet for most properties. So there would be a variation of a little bit.
Isn't -- aren't many houses, isn't their foundation close to the existing grade?
Most are, I'd say, within one to two feet of the existing grade. In having this brought to mind, I drive around now and I look at foundations, as you do, and I've noticed some foundations, without getting out and measuring it, that are a little bit higher than you'd think. You know, in my mind, I picture a foundation pretty close to the ground. I'd say more modern and ranch-style developments are pretty close to the ground. Some of the older homes have, you know, they'll have the basement escape windows a little bit higher, to the point where it could get to the point where it's past three feet.
Right. Or if it's built on a slab, it's on the ground. I don't know how many are like that now, or ever have been historically in this town.
Not many that I've seen.
What would be -- so if you have a house and it has a basement that is elevated, say, three feet, you know, three feet of the -- or four feet of the basement protrudes from the ground, where does the foundation start?
So it starts where, you can see pretty clearly, there's the line of the foundation, unless it's covered.
So it's at the top of the basement floor?
Yes, top of the basement floor, yes.
That's the foundation, and that's well-understood by people that that's foundation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Three feet.
About the fill, is it -- the intention there is if we're constructing a new building and adding fill to the site, not if it's, you know, a site has been historically raised up and a building?
That's correct.
Okay.
You're starting at pre-construction grade, so if you had a teardown, for example, you're not going to do a ton of earthwork after that teardown typically. You might, you know, if you level the site, then I think we're starting back at the measurement where you, in case of, if there's no existing building, that's the measurement we would use.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Well, I did have some more. I mean, I find this definition to be very hard to understand myself, but so that I find to be hard to understand, what I just said. But then the second part is, if there is no existing building, now we're not -- that would make it sound like -- okay, let me put it this way. I think it would be clearer if this definition talked about existing buildings which are being added to, and which we are now need to measure the height of the entire building with the new addition, and new construction. And, you know, in this town, a lot of the new construction, you're going to have an existing building, and I think the assumption is that the point in time when the village is reviewing this is when the existing building has been demolished, and then it's getting site plans and all the rest. That's why if there is no existing building, is that correct?
When the -- are you asking when we would use the definition of building height?
Yes.
We would use it in the case of a site without a building, to establish the maximum height that they could be built to, and that's where you'd see that, that sentence that starts, "if there is no existing building."
Right.
So prior to the start of construction, we would measure out the maximum height allowed on the site using that measurement. The other time that it's used is if you have an addition to an existing building, and you're looking at what is the maximum height allowed of the addition. I'm trying to think of an example where we had -- I can't think of an example, since I've been here, of an addition that would have increased the height of a building beyond existing, behind the maximum. Usually what we see is folks do something behind the building. I suppose if you had, sometimes folks will, like, pop up a bungalow. That could be an example, where, you know, you create a second story on a bungalow, or like, build out that attic space. But that would still be, we would still use the same measurement. Measurement standards for, we would take, you know, the existing building that you are at the top of the foundation, measure up, and that would guide the maximum height allowed.
Right. But is there a possibility for confusion? If you have an existing building on a lot, someone buys it, they come to the village and say, "My plan is to demolish," and then demolish this existing building, and then I'm going to build this other one. But when they're asking for permission, there in fact is a building on the site. I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, would it be clearer for the definition to say something like, "In cases of new construction, post-demolition of any building that was on the site, you use the center of the front sidewalk"?
We could use that instead of, "If there is no existing building." We could use, "in the case of new construction." Yeah, I could work on wording on that if that seems clear.
So what I'm thinking is, like, let's say someone decides to buy a lot, and they want to demolish the building that's there, the house that's there, and they come to the village for approval, and they get approval. They haven't yet demolished the building that's there. And so is there confusion that they could argue, "Well, the existing building, we're going to take a measurement from the, using the existing building's foundation, and that's what we're going to argue to you we should base the building height on for the new building"?
Gosh, I'm not aware of anyone using that argument. I don't know--
Is that what you're trying to -- what are you trying to prevent?
I'm trying to prevent that. I'm trying to prevent that, someone saying, because the time when the existing building exists is unclear.
Right. So you're trying to prevent people from building a taller building than we want?
Right.
Okay, so that's--
I think that would be prevented by the section of the code, I believe in the non-conforming section. If you have a non-conforming building, you know, there are some things that are allowed to remain. Building height would not be grandfathered in. So if you had a building that was taller than permitted, and had, you know, obviously it can remain as long as it reaches its useful life, when it's demolished, then you have to meet the standards that are in the code for new construction. In that case, I would interpret that, I think reasonably speaking, to say, "If there is no existing building," because the existing building would have been torn down.
Really, I think that might only come into play if someone is proposing to reuse an existing foundation.
Right.
Which--
And then according to this definition, you wouldn't take account of the fill that that existing foundation is, took advantage of, you know what I mean? Because that doesn't apply. The existence of fill under that old building that has not been demolished is not accounted for by this. Because your new language for fill is only for, it doesn't -- it does not apply to that second sentence, if there is no existing building. I mean, I guess you're relating it to the center of the front property line. So another question is, why not just use the center of the front property line along the existing sidewalk as the base level for all buildings, whether we're talking about an addition or a new building, a new construction?
I don't have a problem with that, because it definitely makes things clearer, but I think before we would propose that change, we would need to see what sort of an impact that would have on existing homes.
Yeah, I would want to know why the code was written that way to start with, because I know that there is, you know, just, there is general elevation of sites from the street. So most streets are sunken slightly. We don't have huge elevation changes here, but they're, the sites are projected up slightly from the street.
But the sidewalk's usually about a foot above the street level.
Sure.
I mean, it's elevated again from the street.
Sure. So, and I've been trying to pay attention as I drive by, and it seems like there is, on most sites, a gentle elevation up from the sidewalk, not a huge elevation. I don't know that I have available to me elevation information about existing buildings. I don't know if changing that would make a number of homes non-conforming.
And so how would we know if there had ever been fill put under that building, if it's an existing building, if it's a building that's been there for 30 years and someone wants to put an addition on?
Right.
So maybe talking about fill for existing buildings, and to which we're adding, isn't very useful.
So I think if you're talking about making the addition on an existing building, you're measuring the height from the top of the foundation, or three feet above the center point of the front door, if the foundation is exceptionally high. So that seems like it would be in keeping with the existing construction. If we're talking about new construction, or a lack of a building, whichever way you want to term it, we're starting from the front sidewalk, correct, and then moving up. So if the site is already slightly elevated naturally, if the contractor wants to keep that natural elevation, they'll have to account for that, I think, in the construction of the building. That's--
But you just used the word, I don't mean to be argumentative, I'm just trying to make the definition as clear as possible. You just used the term "natural elevation," but that could be something that was filled in 40, 50 years ago.
It could have been. I don't think that there--
And we won't never know that.
That's true. I think to some extent, the, there is, yeah, it could have been longer than 50 years ago. I would suspect that when, as the village was developed, practically speaking, I would expect that the achievement of reducing the height of the road was achieved by taking fill from the roads and then moving it to the sides, you know, and slightly elevating most properties. I think most properties are slightly elevated.
Right.
I haven't heard a great deal of concern about how homes are measured, and that they're radically taller than folks think they should be. If I had heard concerns about that, I could look back and see what the specifics were about those cases and say, "Okay, well here was the concern. We had a 10-foot difference between what we thought it should be and what had ended up being built."
Right.
I think the code is not, it's not scientifically precise, because it does allow that variation of, you know, for a ranch-style house, maybe the measurement starts one foot above elevation, because that's the top of the foundation, where with an older house, you've got maybe three feet is the top of the foundation. So there is some variation about that total maximum allowable height. I think that the existing code tolerates that. I think if we want a greater level of precision, we'll need to do a great deal of research on elevations of existing buildings to drill down into that.
I doubt if this had been a case where it's been like a 10-foot difference, but it might have been a three or four-foot difference, and oftentimes nowadays, it seems like builders are building houses to their maximum possible height.
Sure.
They're pushing the envelope. They're getting it to within a few inches. And if you look around the village, there's a lot of houses that are much shorter than ones being built now. So you'll have this spire, basically, right next to, you know, ranch or a bungalow, and it's like a story and a half or something like that. So there's kind of this huge variation in heights. And I guess that's why I started my questioning to you about, like, is this a good, modern definition of building height, or could we write, could you write, a better, clearer one, starting from scratch, sort of thing? You know what I mean? Because this just seems hard to understand.
Okay. I would suggest that if we, if the commission wants to take a deeper dive into building heights, I would remove this from the minor text amendments, because the amount of research that's going to be required, like, for me to take a deep dive into this, is going to take more time. If we want to refine the definition, we consider that a minor text amendment, and we can move forward. But I would also want to know what the appetite is to make the change, and to take that closer examination.
Okay. Well, I would be fine with going ahead and approving this, I guess, but still, having the commission look at that issue a little bit more about all these issues. And I, like, why not just have one standard, as I said, for measuring everything from, like, the sidewalk height or something? It would just seem easier to me. And then something I think I raised a few years ago, is as I was driving around Riverside, and we have that area called the Babson Estate. Those are all those very low houses, and I'm guessing just from Fortune operating, there has been, none of those houses have been sold off, and someone has tried to put in something that would maximize our building height. But I think that would be quite a significant disruption to that area. And I don't know if the village board has thought about this either, but I'm wondering if there's any interest maybe by the village board to think, like, there are certain areas where we don't want vast, you know, changes in the elevation of buildings, certain historic areas, what we consider neighborhoods in Riverside, that that would be very disruptive to that neighborhood. I think I have to come from the village board, right, to think if that's an issue that should be explored.
Yeah, I do think that would be a major change, or a major undertaking to look at that, just in the way that the village would need to regulate it.
I would want direction from the village board, and taking a look at the other priorities that we put together in terms of the commission work plan and text amendments, and try to figure out if they want to pursue that, where that fits in.
That sounds right to me.
And I think that, you know, if that is something that the village board would be looking to do, that would be something that would really need to do in tandem with the preservation commission.
Yeah.
Because it really is about historic preservation, more than anything else.
I totally agree with that. It just said something occurred to me, and maybe other people who've been around much longer will say, "Oh, like, the preservation commission," which they know that's not an issue. We're not concerned about that. But I'm wondering if, you know, it's worthwhile.
It's not an issue that I'm aware that they've raised. They could have raised it before, and I'm not aware of it. It seems primarily the issue that they're concerned about is making sure that folks are encouraged to buy landmark structures, have the resources to maintain them, and that we discourage, to the extent that we can, tear downs of old structures that could be preserved. Assuming that you all would like to keep this in these revisions in the code, did anybody have any other comments about the definition of building height? Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
It says, it gives a list of, like, accessory pieces that are not included in building height, but includes towers. Seems to me like a tower can be a pretty substantial thing. What, is there a definition of tower somewhere?
I know. Like, what is a tower?
Like, you know, we've got Trump Tower downtown, which is the entire building. So you could build the entire building on top of it?
Sure.
So--
There is a definition.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
It says, "An appurtenance and architectural feature that is higher than the remainder of the building and of small dimension, separate from the building it accompanies, such as the campanile of a church. A tower shall not be limited to cross-section size restrictions of an appurtenance in a business. A tower that exceeds the maximum permitted building height in a residential district or more than 10 feet above the building height in a business district shall be subject to a special use." So it says, "A tower that exceeds the maximum permitted building height in a residential district shall be subject to a special use." Is that inconsistent with--
No, it just says, it says here that they're not necessarily counted when assessing building height, so--
Okay. Well, it sounds like they are not allowed above building height, though.
Yeah.
So it says, "Shall not be included in calculating building height." So if you had--
So it's ignored. Like, and then chimney, chimney or spire makes sense.
Sure.
But the tower seemed like it could be fairly substantial, but if it's called a minor, of small size--
Small dimension.
Small dimension.
Whatever that means.
Okay.
So it can't be like a bedroom or something, bedroom size.
I would see an architectural feature instead of area of the house.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of the architecture around the village that would meet that definition. And I'm not, my architectural terminology is lacking, but there are circular areas that look tower-ish to me on some of our older Victorian homes.
Yeah.
That are prominent features in the front of the home, where the top of that could exceed the height. I think there's a home on Scottswood I have in mind, but without looking at a photo, I'm not sure I would know it.
Yeah, like a Gothic kind of look, like a house.
Yeah.
I wonder though, if those might be, have been included at the time, or they might be, who knows what the building height restrictions were at that time when those were built, but those look to me like part of the house. Those don't look to me like--
I think that the intention is they are, they're a part of the house, like a chimney or a spire.
Except maybe a spire on top wouldn't be, would be excluded.
If we, if we had a, any kind of, I think, question about the interpretation of the code, if we had a new building come in where there was, staff was concerned that the interpretation, you know, hadn't been used before, or that there was some question, we would bring that before the planning and zoning commission, and then the village board to determine if we're making an appropriate determination.
Is this a tower or not?
Is this a tower?
Yeah, I can see how that would be. I understand why it's accepted, because, you know, a tower, in thinking of historic architecture, they tend to be starting above where the roof, the eve line is, and so it would throw off where you're doing the calculation for the midpoint of the eve. So I think, I think I'm okay with that.
Yeah, historically, I think I am. I just, for new construction, I think you could make an awful lot out of a tower that you were allowed to go as high as you wanted.
Okay. If we're ready to move on, I'll cover utility connections to accessory buildings. Oh, no. Sorry, it's a large document, so it's a little slow to load. Okay. So this was based on, this was a staff recommendation based on requests that we've received from homeowners who want to install EV charging stations in their garages, but they found that it would be more economical to connect the electricity directly to a nearby ComEd pole at the back of the lot. There's two that come to mind immediately, of folks who specifically said, "I really want to be able to do this." The zoning code currently states that all utilities that serve accessory buildings have to be extended from the primary dwelling, so that would not allow those connections to the service poles. That requirement, I think, is meant to prevent non-permitted accessory dwelling units.
Right.
However, the zoning code already states that, aside from coach houses that are landmark structures, you can't have an accessory dwelling unit. They're prohibited by the zoning code. So I think that prohibition, I think it's understandable why it was enacted, but it is preventing folks from, who want to install an EV charging station, from doing that economically.
I see.
So we took a look at this, and we would propose removing the statement that utilities serving the buildings have to be extended from the primary dwelling, because it's, I don't think, necessary. And just to clarify, state in the code explicitly that you can provide electrical service from the service pole. We reviewed, we got feedback on this from ComEd, Lakeside Consultants, who's the buildings, excuse me, the village's building code consultant, the electrical inspector, and public safety director. None were opposed to the change. None had safety concerns or any kind of concerns. Building permit would still be required from the village. ComEd would require that the new service panel meets all their requirements, and so we recommend making those changes to the code to accommodate EV charging stations more easily. So I'll scoot down to the section of the code that that refers to in the attachment. Oh, and I did recommend adding this additional sentence. This is just for extra clarity in the code. Sometimes folks flip through the code on their own before they give us a call, and I don't want anyone to get too far down the road of thinking that they can build an accessory dwelling unit to be used as a dwelling. So I'm just recommending to add this sentence, so that folks are well-aware that they can't use ADUs as dwellings. And then some language cleanup here in terms of terminology. And then moving down. And here's the section we recommend revising here, is to explicitly state that the service can be provided by the service pole, and removing the statement that the utilities have to be extended from the dwelling.
My only reservation with this is, thinking from a firefighting perspective, if there's an issue there in the, in a accessory structure, a garage that has a fire, and the service is shut off to the home, making sure that the first responders know that there is another service, that there's a live electrical service in that garage. But if the public safety director is comfortable with it, presumably he's all right with it, so I'll defer to his expertise there.
Okay. Maybe they have a way of quickly looking up how many hookups there are.
Could be.
Hopefully they do.
I did have a question about the, let's see, it's number five, about historic significance. Is it the preservation commission that can designate a landmark, or is that the village board?
It's the village board. I saw that too, and I wasn't sure why, why that was worded that way. I didn't, I didn't necessarily want to change the code too much if I didn't have to. I kind of felt like the procedure is referenced in that section, which kind of clearly lays out what the process is. I can make that change if that would be helpful, but hopefully people wouldn't take their cues about landmarking based on a section of the accessory, you know, structure section of the code.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to either change it to village board or remove it by the preservation commission statement. Yeah, I would, I would prefer to either change it to Village Board or remove it of the, by the Preservation Commission statement.
I think that falls under minor.
Very much so.
Just tweak it, make it a little bit clearer. Okay, we'll move on to, I think the next one is pool decks.
Yes.
This is... So let me move up. Ah, yes. The above-ground pool deck height. So there's a lot of information here. I will try to summarize this as easily as I can. But we changed the village code, I think, just as I joined the village, to, based on variation requests on deck height. So previously, what the code said is deck, decks, and decks are defined as structures that are attached to the house. So that's an important distinction. Can only be four feet tall. That was the highest elevation you could have for a deck. In researching what we had looked at before, I think that the reason for that was folks didn't, was, were aesthetic reasons. I think it was folks didn't want to have a two-story deck or a very tall deck behind their house. I don't think many other communities at the time were found to have that standard, but the village has had that standard for some time. The village received two, at least two variations in a short amount of time to have five-foot-tall decks. And those decks would extend, one was replacing existing deck entirely that was at the level of the first-floor elevation, so the walkout was at five feet. The other was replacing two, was a new build, I think, replacing two small stoops with a deck behind the house. So they wanted to have a deck behind their house. They could, you can have a stoop, you just can't have a deck. So they wanted to have a deck attached to the house. So in recognizing that not every, there are some houses that are elevated to five feet, and that's their first-floor elevation, the Village Board changed that standard. We received, it's an unusual situation, but we did receive a concern about this standard that would strictly interpreted prohibit this type of deck. So you can see in the example photo, you have the first-floor elevation with a deck that looks like it's about a foot off the ground, extending off the first-floor elevation. This isn't the, the photo of the folks who wanted to install the deck. This is just something I found online. But these folks wanted to have a, you know, above-ground pool. They wanted it attached to the deck that's attached to their house. So it would meet the definition of a deck because it's attached to the house. The, it was a, if memory serves, a ranch-style house, so fairly low to the ground. So they would want to elevate their deck so that would surround the house. I think a strict interpretation of the code would say that because this is basically a multi-level deck. It's one structure, it's attached to the house, it qualifies as a deck, and therefore could be limited to the first floor. The desire was to specify that if you had some sort of structure, an above-ground pool or a hot tub, that was behind a house with a lower elevation, to allow a multi-level deck effectively, so that you could have this kind of setup without any kind of question in the code or seeking a variation. So I made a, that's the pool. So we recommended specifying in the code, adding a sentence stating that for decks that are adjacent to an on-grade, above-ground pool or hot tub, they can be higher than the elevation of the first floor of the principal building, but they cannot be higher than the top of the pool or hot tub. So just to relieve any concern or confusion about that requirement. And again, if this were a, you know, some folks have an above-ground pool, it's kind of set back from the house a little bit. If you want to build a deck around that, it's not a deck. That is something else. Who could know? I don't want to try to define it, but that would not be considered a deck for our definition because it's not attached to the house, so...
Is that something you think should be addressed?
I do not.
So in that example, if they pushed that above-ground pool like three feet further away from the house, they wouldn't really need to have it?
As long as they separated the structure, then I think it wouldn't be a deck because it wouldn't be attached to the house. So if this connection were severed and you walked on the ground and then, you know, went upstairs and then went around, I think you'd have two different types of structures. It's a very specific situation, but I wrote it down when we had the requests come in, and I wanted to see if there is a desire to make that change to the code.
You know, decks are not part of the impervious surface anymore, right? As long as they have a surface underneath.
As long as they meet our four criteria, and most, nearly all decks do. But they do meet, but they are part of building coverage.
Yeah, if, if we're okay with them pushing the tub back three feet and building whatever this mysterious structure is around it, it seems like we should be okay with them doing it like this.
They, and my logic was basically the, the deck isn't, most decks are going to be four to five feet tall at, at most, because most first-floor walkouts are probably five feet is pushing it. So in most above-ground pools, I think I put, I think it's like forty-two inches is the top of most above-ground pools, so you're not going to see an absurdly tall deck.
The only suggestion I would have is maybe it would be useful to say, "Accept that decks adjacent to and on to..."
Oh, so instead, at the end of the first sentence, comma, "Accept that decks adjacent to..."
And then the next one says decks and...
I think we usually use that language, "accept that."
Decks adjacent to and... What does it mean? It says, "Decks adjacent to an on-grade, above-ground pool." Is that, understood what that means?
I would, I can't imagine an above-ground pool that's not on-grade, but sometimes hot tubs, people try to do some, you know, fancy stuff with hot tubs. Try to get them up in the air.
Double-decker hot tub.
Mm-hmm. Hot tubs on decks are popular for vacation rentals, as I've seen, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify just so there's no additional wiggle room.
So what does that mean? If someone did have one that was elevated, what could they build? They couldn't build a deck around it? I mean, is this opening that...
They would have to move it away from the house and separate it from the structure of the building for zoning purposes. For the building code, I think...
It's not addressed.
That's between, that's between the building inspector and, and the applicant at that point.
So you think that saying "on-grade" is clear to any homeowner?
I'm just trying to, trying to make it clear.
That, what, what that means?
Oh, I think "on-grade" is very clear, yeah.
You can't have it higher.
I think "on-grade" is, yeah, yeah, commonly understood.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with the general concept, but I just had a question about the setback requirements. So we say, "Decks are permitted in the interior side yard, provided they meet the interior side yard setback requirement." Does that effectively mean that the deck can't be closer to the lot line than the home?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
In that case, I'm all for it.
You can put a picture. You found it online. It was helpful, too.
I was very happy I found it. I was trying to paint a picture with words, but it's hard to describe. All right, we'll move on to the next minor amendment. The pool setback requirement, this is just a difference of two standards in the code. The zoning code and the building code are in two different sections of the village's municipal code. The zoning code states that swimming pools have to be setback at least five feet from any side lot line and three feet from any rear lot line. However, the building code, which is not the international building code, it's an amendment that the village made to the building code for the village, requires a ten-foot setback from any property line. So it's a greater restriction. We had an application that was reviewed and approved for zoning and not reviewed and not approved for building. It was confusing and a little frustrating for the applicant. So recommend make that change so that, and just, there's a statement in here. Basically, whatever stricter standard exists, when there's a conflict in the code, the stricter standard holds. So staff is recommending using that ten-foot setback.
Got it. Yeah, okay. Could I just ask a...
Sure.
Question. Is there something in, since we're now talking about the hot tubs and pools that are separate from the house?
Mm-hmm.
And if you had one of those and you had a deck around it, does the code clearly require that to be ten feet away from property lines? I was just quickly trying to look at that here, because we're not calling those decks.
That's true.
There would be accessory structures, maybe?
I think it would be an accessory structure.
I'd have to look at the section of the code. In the encroachment standards, maybe?
I'd have to look at the encroachment standards and find the most fitting encroachment.
I would say if it were... This says three feet. Those could be three feet from any lot line, as far as I can tell, right in that first page that, of encroachments. Okay. All right, that's just a minor point, I guess. Okay. Just because deck, I'm just thinking about that because we're now saying decks have to be ten feet away. Well, what if you had a deck attached to a hot tub? That wouldn't apply, right? Maybe something for you to look at, have a better answer for than I do right now.
This next recommend, recommended change is very minor. It's just clarifying a standard that already exists, which is that the Preservation Commission shall review and comment on proposed amendments to the zoning code. That doesn't say that in the text amendment section or the amendment section of the zoning code, but it does say that in the preservation section. So I'd like to add that to the text amendment. Just don't want to miss anything. It's just a minor change. And the last is that originally, I thought we might define street and alley with the hope to provide some clarity in looking at standards for fences. When I reviewed the standards for fences, I think that we can revise them to provide clarity without actually having to define street and alley. We can just use the common terms, which is what we use now. And we can, if we find, when we look at fence standards, which is on our list of text revisions, that we need to make that definition, we can. But I think at this point, it's unnecessary.
Okay. Okay. Could I go back for a second again?
Of course.
I'm looking at this. I'm looking at hot tubs. They only have to be, their encroachment can be a minimum of five feet from any property line.
Okay.
Should those be treated the same as swimming pools, or are they just not, something that the building code addresses at all?
The building code didn't address hot tubs.
Okay.
So I would assume that swimming pools were thought, and I think kids running and jumping, I assume was the reason behind, you know, and splashing, and I think they're a little more disruptive than...
Kind of depends, I suppose, on who's living in the house, but...
True.
Oh, all right. I haven't got any complaints, all right.
Okay, moving on to the process amendments. So we started with text and zoning map amendments. And our goal was to look at the standards, which were considered possibly repetitive and therefore unnecessary. I consulted with the village attorney. He advised that we don't have to use certain standards. But basically, whatever standards we use should help the Planning and Zoning Commission and then the Village Board determine whether the amendment is rational, which typically has been interpreted to mean that the amendment is consistent with village plans, the character of the neighborhood, and the general character and goals and policies of the village. So with that in mind, we took a look at a couple of changes, but not radical changes to our standards in the text and zoning map amendment section. So scrolling down, I'm on page twenty of fifty-one, or page one of five of this amendment. Oh, I think this might be, oh, yes, so this is our insertion in the text, in the text and zoning map amendments process. I just mentioned a minute ago inserting the fact that the Preservation Commission will review them, so that's that section there. And then moving down, we just used some terminology changes. One of the changes before we scrolled, well, I'll scroll down and kind of show you what I'm looking at, but currently, everything is organized in a table. Some of the, so we have a standard, and then, I'll show you, a standard, a column for text amendment, there we are. We have the standard that we use to consider, and then a column for map amendments and a column for text amendments. And so some are applicable to both, some applicable are applicable to one and not the other. I personally find that difficult to use, and I'm going to recommend that we just create two lists, which are these two lists that are highlighted in red. So taking a look at all of the possible standards, there were a couple that I would recommend removing, and then these are the remaining ones. And I'll scroll to the ones that I recommended removing, which I think is in, I think maybe in the staff report, so I apologize for all the scrolling. We'll get through this. Let's see here.
It's the rational combining redundant and eliminating standards.
I'm sorry?
It's page eleven in your staff document.
Is it page eleven? Thank you.
Yeah.
Page five of eight.
Page five of eight?
That's what I have.
Oh, sorry, page eleven in the document.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
There you go.
Turned around in my own document.
Keep going, right there.
Yep. So I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I had a list and I thought I had provided a crossed-out version of which ones I was proposing and which ones I was proposing to keep and which I was proposing to remove to make them a little easier to look at. So let me just review here quickly and see if I can find that. Here it is. I was just looking in the wrong spot. All right, starting, so we've got two types of amendments. We've got text amendments and map amendments. So if you actually pulled those out of a list and then looked at them, here's our, here are the proposed changes, and the results of those changes are actually listed above here. This is the result. But taking a look at the actual changes that should be made, or that we're proposing make, the first change, number three, is literally just a change in language to add goals and policies instead of just plans. The village does have plans, but there are also goals and policies that may be relevant. And then we recommended removing this sentence. It appears to be self-evident and not relevant to whether the amendment is rational. So that's whether the proposed amendment corrects an error or omission, adds clarification to existing requirements, or reflects a change in policy. It seems like the amendment would be one of those. Otherwise, we wouldn't be making the amendment. It fits in one of those categories. So it could be that the village changed the policy and therefore we're changing the text amendment. It could be a clarification, correcting an error or omission. I'm not sure that this helps us determine whether it's a rational change. The second removal sounds very similar in intent to the first and second points. Particularly the second point, the relative gain to the public. So this says that the proposed amendment will benefit the residents of the village as a whole, just as this says there's a relative gain to the public. And the first sentence says it promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare. Number seven does seem to be similar to point number three as amended, whether the proposed amendment provides a more workable way to achieve the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance and the village plans. I recommend adding the extent to which the proposed amendment creates or eliminates nonconformities. I think that's worth consideration when considering an amendment. And the last point I recommended removing, it seems like an administrative issue rather than helping to determine whether the text amendment is rational, and that's the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall structure and organization of the code. We would presumably add things where they make sense in the code.
I very much support all of these changes. I know in the past, when we've considered text amendments and going through the standards, there's been a lot where it feels like we're sort of saying the same thing over and over and over again. So eliminating the redundancy is great. It looks like in the strikeout version of the ordinance, the redline version, that's a couple pages ahead of this, the standard about the relative gain to the public was accidentally deleted.
That is definitely possible.
Just want to make sure that that does stay in there when we...
That was accidentally deleted. Thank you for pointing that out. I'll make sure that that's added back. That should be number two.
Good eyes.
Or number three. If there aren't any questions about the changes to the text amendments, I'll go through the changes to the map amendments. So more minor changes here. In point four, the current standard is relative gain to the public as opposed to the hardship imposed by the applicant. Just added a sentence of clarification, the hardship specifically is remaining in the existing zoning districts. This is based on a map amendment. is remaining in the existing zoning district, because this is based on a map amendment. Standard number 9 seems to me, just like in the text amendments, very similar to a previous standard, in this case, standard 4, because it speaks to the benefit to the public as a whole as opposed to the imposition upon the applicant. And then in number 10, the same issue, adding or eliminates nonconformities. So minor changes to those.
No comments on those?
Okay. So I think, I think we covered everything that would be changed in that section. In the bottom language here, decision by the village board, I just inserted the village board upon receiving the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Preservation Commission. So inserted the Preservation Commission's review in that section of the code as well. Okay.
I also agree with you that it's much cleaner than this confusing table.
Oh, yes. I did not like the table. Table I found hard to use. All right. So moving on to the next type of amendments, we have subdivisions. So the main change that I would like to make here, or propose making here, is to have different standards for dividing property as opposed to combining property. Currently, they have the same standards. It's completely understandable, both based on most communities and specifically on Riverside, the concerns that one would have about subdividing property. Those are stated in the code, and I think were more of an issue, you know, maybe 20 years ago, but still remain of a concern. So I would not recommend any changes to the subdivision process, which includes a review and recommendation by the Historical Commission, review and recommendation by the Preservation Commission, a public hearing for the Planning Commission, and then approval by the village board. So there's quite a bit of review, excuse me, strike, Historical Commission, I apologize. I don't think we do their review. But those three bodies, Preservation, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the village board. What I would recommend is that we remove, due to improving applicants, reducing the number of meetings, and reducing the related legal fees, that for lot combinations, we only have review by the, by the village board. The village board can, of course, if it gets to the point where they're doing a lot combination, they have concerns about it, and want input from the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Preservation Commission can request that input. But that would be the recommended change, the major recommended change. So just as a reminder, that would still allow an opportunity for public comment and review of the application of the village board, so people would have an opportunity to show up and speak about that if they had a concern about a lot combination.
I think that's fine. I'd be in favor of doing it administratively for a combination, but that might be going a bridge too far here.
Yeah, I thought we'd maybe talked about that last time.
I thought it might be a bridge too far.
Okay. That's fair.
The village board has to do something.
So other, some other minor changes, updating the deposit for subdivisions to reflect what we actually collect, which was updated back in December of 2024 under a different ordinance, establishing a $500 deposit for lot combinations. And that's a deposit that the applicant makes when they submit the application. We draw down the funds that we use for legal fees and staff review from that. Any remainder is submitted back to the applicant at the end of the application. If they owe us money, we submit, send them an invoice. Just a name change in terms of Cook County Porter of Deeds, which is now that assumed those duties are assumed by the clerk's office. That was updated. And then I add a language to clarify the scope of the Preservation Commission's review. So we'll just take a look at those quickly, make sure there aren't any specific concerns. Okay. At the start of the subdivision and lot combinations, we'll rename that section, remove the specification that a subdivision includes lot combinations, and define lot combination. And all of these changes are related to that change of creating a lot combination type. So these are all related to that same theme. I did remove what I thought was an unnecessary step. So on, we have certifications that appear on the final plat. There is a statement of approval signed by the village engineer certifying that improvements described in the subdivision application meet the minimum requirements of the chapter. That's usually pretty appropriate if you're developing undeveloped land. You want to make sure that you have appropriate utilities, access points to that property. The second half of that sentence seemed a little bit onerous to me in its, "and" giving an estimate cost of such improvements, including the cost of engineering and inspection. If there were any public improvements associated with the subdivision, those would already have been agreed upon and as part of a development agreement. So seems unnecessary to have that in there.
Okay.
Okay, these are sorting out the application fees and the process changes. This was the thing that I mentioned about clarifying the Preservation Commission's review. The Preservation Commission does not review subdivision applications in the business districts. So we've got our central business district, and then the business district on Harlem Avenue. That is stated in the Preservation Code, but it's not stated here. So I'm bringing that up to this section and providing a reference to the Preservation Section Code for clarity. And these are the, I did exchange, I did, and we'll talk about this in a minute, but I did make most of our deadlines 60 days. I recommended extending that. That just gives a little bit more time to provide administrative support. Obviously, generally, the village is going to do everything as quickly as possible and doesn't want to delay. But providing an additional timeframe seems reasonable to get things recorded, just in case there's some sort of clerical error printing issue. Okay. And this is the addition of the procedures for lot combination that we'd be adding. And it states that they're submitted to the village board of trustees for review and approval. And the rest is language changes about the Cook County clerk and making a lot combination. Okay. All right. We'll go back to the next process amendment. I think I might have gone too far afield. I apologize. Special uses. So special uses, as a reminder, there, those are the use of land and buildings and other structures that have to be approved by the village board because they could have impacts on neighboring properties. So that could include things like operating a bed and breakfast in a residential district, or operating a restaurant with a drive-through in the B1 district. So there are structural issues as well as business operation issues. So we have standards for reviewing them, just like we do for variations. As a reminder, we don't have a set of standards that we have to use. We just want to make sure that the decision is rational, doesn't have too excessive negative impacts on neighboring properties, the character of the neighborhood, or the character of the village. So we recommend removing two administrative standards. We can confirm those are met when the application is submitted. The other recommendation that we're making is that we extend the expiration of the approval. So currently, we have variations receive a one-year expiry date after their approval. Within that year after they're approved, they not only have to obtain a building permit, but they have to start construction on whatever is related to the variation. Special uses, which can also have structural elements, such as constructing a drive-through as part of a development, have a 180-day expiration, so half the time. For each type of application, variation, and special use, you can, the applicant can apply for one extension of that expiration. In the case of variations, that's another full year. In the case of special use, it's another 180 days. So staff is recommending to make those the same standard, that you have a special use for 365 days. You can apply for one 365-day extension to be granted by the village board. So those are the two recommendations. And I'll scoot down to the special use standards to show you the administrative standards that I would recommend removing. Apologize, my bookmarks don't show up in, we have subdivisions. These are the two standards I would recommend removing, that the proposed use is designated as a special use in that district in the zoning code. So basically, what's that saying is there's a chart that has the uses that are allowed in the zoning district. If it, if there's an S, you have to apply for a special use. The standard is saying, yes, there's an S in the box saying you have to get a special use. I think we can handle that on a staff level. And that the proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is located, other than the fact that they're applying for a special use. So every, all the other standards are met. And I think that we can check that on a staff level. Then we have, and this is the language that would extend the expiration to 365 days and allow one 365-day extension.
Is this changed because it's actually been an issue before, or just trying to simplify things we're making?
Trying to simplify things. We have the, it, it seems like the special uses that we've had recently are related to a development. So we had, gosh, what comes to mind is that is our plan unit development, which had 180-day expiration, and there, the applicant is applying for an extension of that. It just seems like, just to give a little more breathing room to folks, and the village board can always deny that extension if they want to, if the circumstances surrounding the property have changed, or there's some change of opinion.
I think, I think that makes a lot of sense, because you'll often have a special use in conjunction with a variation. And so to have two separate expirations is just unnecessarily confusing.
Okay. All right, moving on, we have, the next process standards are for the plan unit development. I'm recommending we make the same change to the plan unit development expiration that we're making to special uses. They have a 300, currently, it's 180 days. The applicant for the PUD at 28 to 30 Spurley, which I just mentioned, is going before the village board to request that extension. It's a fairly significant application process, having to redo that application process due to, most large-scale projects have delays due to financing, lining up contractors, weather, whatever it is, permitting delays with other agencies. So extending that to 365 days with the village, the option of one extension to be approved by the village board makes some amount of sense to me.
Agreed.
I can show you that section in the code. I'll kind of consolidate this, so we're not skipping back and forth too much. That's a minor change I can show you later. So in terms of site plan review, the only recommendation that I'm making here is that we amend the deadline for review from 30 days to 60 days, which is consistent with our existing review timeframes for other applications, such as variations and special uses. So we have, well, we would have 60 days to get an application before you on the Planning and Zoning Commission, just like we do for variations and special uses. That allows for, if we have a lack of a quorum at a meeting, occasionally, we'll cancel due to holidays or have shifting schedules. So it just gives a little bit of breathing room for staff to make sure that we meet those deadlines. The same for the sixth and last recommended change is for the procedures for landmark designation. There is, there are two Preservation Commission meetings required. One is a preliminary meeting. At the preliminary meeting, they make a determination about whether the application should move forward to a public hearing. And then there is a public hearing for the Preservation Commission. There is a 30-day deadline after that initial meeting to have the, to have the public hearing, which is very challenging to meet, given the fact that it, they normally meet once every other month. We've got to find, make sure the applicant finds an acceptable time. We've got to get a quorum and a space for the meeting. So I would recommend we extend that, just to give us a little more breathing room and to be consistent. I'll just zoom if we want to take a quick look at what those changes would look like actually in the text, just to make sure you're comfortable with that. Here's the plan unit development section. That would extend the deadline from 180 days to 365 with the one extension. Site plan review, going from 30 to 60 days for review. Adobe is not keeping up with my scrolling. While that loads, I'll ask that, because that was the last thing that I had. I'll ask you if you have any questions. I know that was a lot of minutia and detail. Are there any other concerns or questions?
None for me.
Okay. All right. The next step, you may have picked up, for those sharp-eyed listeners and observers, that the Preservation Commission does review text amendments. So the next steps, I'll ask the Preservation Commission to review these amendments and provide feedback on June 12. We'll schedule a public hearing for these amendments. I anticipate we will return to the village board and provide a summary of proposed direction before we hold that public hearing, so it may be delayed slightly, so that we can accommodate the review by the village board and direction. The village board meets once in June and once in July. So just to give you an idea of the timeframe, it might be a little bit before we have this public hearing. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Anne. That's a lot.
You have all the direction you need from us?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very much. So that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is information. Does anyone have any information they would like to share?
I have two pieces of information if I could.
Yes.
One is mundane, that our next meeting is scheduled for June 25. I currently do not have any agenda items. If I have enough research complete on our next set of text amendments, I'll ask to have a discussion on those. If not, I would ask that we cancel that meeting. The second, if I could, is to recognize that this would have been Commissioner Pallatier's last meeting. Commissioner Pallatier is a long-serving and very valuable and valued member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe she was appointed in, gosh, 2014. So served, I think, even more than two terms, and was willing and very game to step in at the last minute to fill in as chairperson when we needed her, and has been through quite a few important projects with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just wanted to express my appreciation for her serving.
Thank you. Will definitely miss her contributions and dedication and insight. Definitely miss having her on the commission.
Yes, I second that. She's been a very important part of the commission for many years.
Agreed.
All right. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.